Colin Hasner looks good. Miss Jagger. That's on my new pay rate.
Ascension Parish zoning commission is in session. All members are present except the chairman Donald Songe who's away with family matter. Where the staff introduce themselves.
Patrice Shantin, zoning secretary.
And everybody else, oh, go ahead. We've already, everybody else has been introducing. All right. Do you have a motion to accept the minutes of the previous meeting? Mr. Nizo, second.
Second.
Good, a second.
Yeah, second.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Do we, uh, do we have any comments on any issues that are not on the agenda?
No, on the agenda.
Oh.
On the agenda but not open for publication.
All right. So, I have no comments, so we'll move to item number eight. Public hearings amend Ascension Parish development code. Zoning tables for recommendations for approval or denial for Ascension Parish.
Okay, so this commission asked me to take these items back to strategic planning for a, I guess, a description of why they were asking for what they were asking, and to ask if there was any significance to the actual numbers that were given. I see Commissioner Nizo smiling, he must have watched the meeting, because we got the answer of, we want the commission to tell us what they think it should be. So, what I would like to recommend is that we take our public hearing on these items, listen to any public comment that we may have, and then choose to make a recommendation forward or just leave it as is. So, the first item is reduce the single-family density from eight units per acre to four dwelling units per acre. If I was gonna make a suggestion, I would suggest that be moved up to six units per acre. Down from eight, from eight to six units per acre.
And the logic is?
The logic is, if you're gonna build single-family detached housing in a commercial designation, you're gonna build small lots, therefore your density is gonna be higher. You probably won't ever get to eight units an acre because that's probably like an eighteen or a twenty-foot product, but if you got to a thirty or a forty-foot product, you could easily get to six units an acre.
Does this stem from any complaints or anything, Ricky? I mean...
No, sir.
This kinda seems to come out of nowhere, I guess. And I guess that's the same question I had last time, I guess. I don't know. I guess I'm just wondering where it's, what's the reason?
Ultimately, I, I might surmise that, uh, the speculation has been that the infrastructure in the parish isn't sufficient enough to, uh, if you looked at our zoning map and you painted the vacant pink lots, our mixed-use lots, all at twenty units per acre, could we support that much multifamily housing? I would argue that economically, no one would build that much multifamily housing. But, the argument was, do we need that much high-density residential in the parish? And it trickled down into the other residential townhouses and single-family detached densities as well. But it started with the apartment density of, do we want and/or need twenty units an acre when we don't have public sewer, water's controlled by Baton Rouge, our transportation network is substandard in some areas? So, that, that's where it stemmed from.
Let's just comment. In the code seventeen twenty, uh, seventy-three, site recommend requirements, part B. Purpose and intent for density restrictions. I won't go through all of the rhetoric, but last part. Manage and develop the density, promote public health, safety by ensuring that adequate infrastructure is in place. When you consider the growth that we all feel the parish will be undergoing in upcoming future, measures like that, some type of restrictions, guidelines, are gonna be important to meet the demands on infrastructure utilities. If we don't look at that now, just like our master plan concept, we're gonna be burdened with this. Recently, in an election, we, we tried to get some supporting finance structure for flooding. It was voted down. Somewhere, we're gonna have to look at these things up the road and put some type of limitations considering the supporting infrastructure. I think this is an excellent start. It may warrant revision, but we have to consider some type of guidelines and limitations.
Any other comments from anybody?
Well, let's have, we have a public hearing, right?
Yes.
See if we have any comments.
Do we have a comment from the audience? Ms. Gopel, would you like to? She can go ahead and speak now if she'd like. Okay, all right. Mr. Iloar, see?
Well, then I have a comment about item A, which we're discussing. I, I'm, I'm just opposed to, I, I think that reducing the density from eight to four is arbitrary, and so would reducing it from eight to six be arbitrary. I don't see a driving reason for doing this. I appreciate, as much as anyone does, the limited infrastructure we have here. I think the solution to that is to improve the infrastructure. There are people who wanna move into the parish. There are people who wanna move into the parish who can't afford a $400,000 home. We have to accommodate that fact. We have too many workers in the parish who live outside of Ascension Parish because they can't afford to live here. And I only see reducing, uh, the density, uh, the single-family density, and that really goes for the other issues that we're gonna address also, as, uh, as limiting that possibility. I think it, with, with the density as it is, it gives the developer the flexibility of putting fewer, uh, or a lower density on the property. If you take that away, there's no flexibility there, and it might be financially infeasible for a developer to, to build anything at all. So, I'm, I wanna be on record as opposing this. Opposing any change to it.
Mr. Chair. What, what other alternatives do we have to address what Mr. Calender brought up about, as we look at development, we know there's a huge infrastructure problem. How as a commission, do we address that absent something like this? And I'm not in favor necessarily of doing this, but I'm curious about what other alternatives do we have?
The first one that I think we can, and we are actively addressing, Ray Miller, who spoke about the transportation plan. We are working on revising our traffic impact study policy. So, looking at how a potential development is going to impact your transportation infrastructure system is key. The sewage issue, this commission is not gonna resolve, not gonna do it. Water is not gonna be resolved. Schools, I have spoke, since I got here, that I think we need a more integral relationship with the school system in determining whether or not an approval, uh, an approval should have some factor, whether or not the school that's serving that development has capacity. That hasn't been well-received, and so I haven't pushed that issue. But, you know, that's an infrastructure. This body isn't gonna really address that either. So, transportation is the way that we're gonna do that, and limiting density ultimately does limit the availability of the housing product ladder that we've talked about in the past of having the ability to build different types of units. And our commercial categories are the only place that can happen because our residential categories are so restrictive in what you can build there.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, I guess I'm, I'm like Mr. Schief here. I mean, I appreciate why the infrastructure problems that we may have definitely need to be addressed. You're taking away, I guess, like a shuttle of being able to add, you know, I guess, you're not able to, you're not allowing someone to build, I guess, an apartment complex in a commercial district that's right now allowed, what, eight dwellings per acre, is what it is? I don't know, I just feel like it's, it's, you're going about it the wrong way. I guess, uh, infrastructure ways, uh, I'm trying to think, I'm, I'm losing my train of thought.
Josh, while you, while you think about that, I think I know where you might be going with that. And that the multifamily residential is twenty, recommended to be twenty down to eight, so it's item C on the agenda, I think. A is the single-family density dwelling units. You know, it was clear the parish, the residents of Ascension Parish were not in favor of supporting a half-cent sales tax for transportation improvements. Parish will have to make some difficult decisions regarding how we're going to improve the transportation, wastewater, water infrastructure in the parish. It might have to be a combination of user fees, of, of impact fees. It's gonna be, I have to be imaginative. There were lots of people I know who admitted that, yeah, transportation is a problem here, but I'm not gonna pay another half-cent on sales tax to solve that problem. The problem we have is a good one in many ways. We have people who wanna move into the parish, one of the few growing parishes in the state. And I like that fact, it's part of the reason that I, I like living in Ascension Parish. I think it's a, it's a place to live, and a place where people wanna live, largely because of the school systems and, and other things, the way we do things here. So, I, um, I think the parish, the council will have to make some tough decisions on how to pay for infrastructure. And I don't think the, the solution is to limit the number of people that we allow to, to live here because we have an infrastructure problem. The solution is to repair the infrastructure. And it will take some difficult moves by the, by the council, by the administration to do that.
I guess, I guess kinda what I was asking was something along the lines of, what kind of studies have been done, or what kind of statistics are we, are we leaning on for saying that we don't have the capacity for sewer? I mean, I know that the infrastructure in place now is inadequate in many ways. I mean, there's no hardcore numbers to say that in this particular area where we might allow this kind of zoning now, that the infrastructure can't handle it? I guess is what I'm, uh, is kinda what I'm asking. I don't wanna see any more studies, any more than an ex-con for something like this, but now you're able to kinda develop.
The sewer issue is that we don't have sewer. And so, by putting another apartment project in an area, you're having another packaged treatment plant that's dumping semi-treated effluent into another parish bayou, as opposed to it going into a pipe that goes into a treatment plant that, you know, gets treated as a hole. And so, when you talk about sewer, you know, it's, it's the same for a major subdivision as it is for an apartment complex, as it is for a commercial development. You've got private treatment facilities dumping into parish waterways that may not have the effluent capacity beyond what DEQ or DHH or whatever. You know, there's, there's factors in that, I, I'm not gonna get into it. I don't wanna be in the sewer business. But, the, uh, that's the issue when you talk about sewer infrastructure. You know, the dollars and cents to put all those pipes in the ground, to connect all those systems, it's tremendous. And I'm not gonna pretend that it's gonna happen anytime soon.
Well, the fact is, the parish will have to do something with the sewer. It's gonna be under consent decree, there, it's gonna be, we're gonna be fined. Uh, there's, there's no choice in the matter. If you're gonna build a sewer plant, you might as well build it for build-outs in Ascension. We have to do it. We have to have a sewer treatment system. We don't, we don't really have any choice. We're gonna be forced to do that. We're gonna be forced to, to incorporate the, all the private systems that are out there now into, into a consolidated sewer system. The parish has taken steps in that direction for some time now. I don't, I don't know how it's gonna be paid for. It's probably gonna have to be, like I said, imaginative, user fees, other things. But when you build a sewer treatment plant, you build it to be able to accommodate build-out in, in the parish. Or at least to be able to be expanded to accommodate build-out in the parish. So, we have to go in that direction. So, lack of that, that infrastructure now is not a reason to consider what we're considering here. I appreciate that, the road issue is, is sort of a different issue. That does burden, uh, traffic's terrible here. Uh, we, we didn't solve it with the sales tax, we have to solve it some other way. And maybe that, as I said, might be a combination of transportation user fees, impact fees, other things. But, um, you know, and it should, yes, it should be taken into consideration when we consider developments in an area. I'm just opposed to, to this. I don't see the, I don't see the numbers, as, as Josh was pointing out earlier. I don't see numbers that say you, you have, you must do, you must make this move, you must decrease the density. And not tied to anything specific with respect to the infrastructure. Philosophically, as we were talking about earlier, yeah, I get it. You know, we have to do something. I just don't think this is a solution.
So, um, Mr. Chair.
I think, I think one of the problems, I was sitting here and listened to everybody talk about it, and it's hard to disagree with anybody's point of view as it's presented. Obviously, you know, we have to do something. We don't have the infrastructure to handle what we have, and we, obviously, we're gonna need the quarters for living with what's happening in Ascension Parish currently, with the influx that we're planning. We, we seem to know what we're gonna have in the very near future. We need places for people to live. I think one of the problems with what's being presented here tonight is that I personally don't see any background information on making a decision on these numbers. Like you said, Mr. Compton, I, I watched that strategic planning meeting the other night, and, uh, when you requested how they arrived at the numbers they presented to us, it was almost like they really couldn't give you a basis for it. And it was like, we took high to low, and this is the numbers we came up with, but they're free to make any decision they wanna make. Is this an arbitrary number we're supposed to come up with? Is, is going from twenty down to ten gonna really make that big of a difference with the infrastructure? Or is it just pecking at a sore? You know, do, is it gonna do any good to go down from ten to six? Or to go down at all? Is it gonna make that big of a change? Do we have any background information that tells us this is how it's gonna affect the use of the infrastructure that we currently have if we start doing this? And I need more information before I can make a decision like that.
I agree that we need more information. And also, I wouldn't wanna make any decision that would make, uh, many multifamily-type housing units, apartment complexes, for instance, you know, financially unviable. They need to be able to, that, that needs to be able to be constructed and used. I mean, lots of people that move in for the, for the industrial expansion need to live in a place like that for a while. And lots of people who work at McDonald's or the service industry of any kind, or at Tanger, can't afford even a $150,000 house. But they can afford to live in an apartment. And this eliminates the construction of nice new apartments.
Mr. Chair, I, I would think it'd be incumbent upon the strategic planning committee to not only think about density issues, but tell us the direction or what their thought process on a multitude of issues. I don't think we can address something absent, uh, some indication from the, from the strategic planning commission about what is the road? What's their vision of roads, sewer, schools, et cetera? I just feel like they kinda dumped it on us, and, you know, we're supposed to come up with something, and I'm with, I'm with everybody that's spoken here. We, there's a definite need to do something, but a one-shot item with no backup isn't it.
We decided to split these up last time, I think, into three different ones, so we're not talking about each one. I mean, we're talking about each one individually, so, um...
You wanna talk about item B now?
Well, no, I, I think we need to move on, one, each one.
Do, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Calender.
I think it's clear the concern we have. While we all recognize burden, potential burdens on infrastructure, would it be possible, be it your strategic planning committee or if the parish has to hire someone, considering, considering where we are now, the burdens on our infrastructure, be it sewerage, be it roads, any utilities? To project, considering the state is where we are right now, considering what the projection is in the next five years for the population, what are the harms to the infrastructure? I think those are the kinda things we want to see here before we can move forward to say, well, I can see now. It's clear we don't see, it's clear we are concerned. For me, obviously, a concern will be is, at some point, there's gonna be some limitation on some demands because of the burden on infrastructure. It's all gonna be a matter of dollars and cents. Where the funds will go, we don't know yet. Where they're coming from, we don't know. It's clear there's some demands. What we're asking for is something to come back, help us to understand, project the numbers, real numbers, not arbitrary nor capricious. Where we are now, the demands on our current systems, so we can make some type of decision to support or just say deny.
Ms. Gopel, would you like to speak now?
Good evening, gentlemen. Catherine Gopel. I didn't know that this was gonna be on the agenda in three separate parts. I could have separated out my comments and made them a lot longer, but I'll do the best I can. Density is a key in zoning and the most important element in planning. Everything else follows the density. You are considering tonight the reduction of residential density in mixed-use and crossroads commercial only. Reducing single-family from eight to four units per acre, reducing duplex or zero-lot line from ten to five per acre, and reducing multifamily residential from twenty to eight per acre. Mixed-use supports both residential and commercial development in areas where infrastructure is adequate to do so. However, the definition of crossroads commercial states, and I quote, "This district serves the commercial needs of outlying residents of the parish," end quote. It says nothing about residential development. Residential development in crossroads commercial is inconsistent with the purpose and definition of this zoning use. Consider removing residential development from crossroads commercial, which is about half of one percent of the total land in the parish. With, with such a small percentage of crossroads commercial zones, we do not need to be filling it up with residential development. We should be encouraging commercial development in these areas. I'd like to have a quick look at the zoning map. Okay. This shows that the most mixed-use categories, most of them, form a triangle. Airline, highway, across forty-two and down forty-four. Crossroads commercial is found mainly along highways forty-four, the little yellow dots, and on four-thirty-one. Both forty-four and four-thirty-one are two-lane roads. The question here is, how much density can these areas handle safely with existing infrastructure? Reductions in zoning are a positive change. Similar changes were considered in 2011 before you all took your offices. Hundreds of Ascension Parish residents in public hearings throughout the parish communicated support for reducing density in the existing tables, especially in the categories that you're considering. Higher density should be limited to areas where the infrastructure can't support it. That's your principle number two in your master plan. Recent statistics from the Ascension Parish Sheriff's Office show that with higher density comes higher crime. The argument has been made that reductions being considered are not economical for building apartment complexes. Does this mean the developer cannot make as much money as he wants to? Your concern should first and foremost be the dense, is the density appropriate for the zoning category, conducive to the safety of the citizens, and that the infrastructure is adequate. Please reduce the density. It may not be what it is here on this piece of paper, but I would, I would encourage you to do that. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Gopel.
Mr. Iloar.
Mr. Iloar.
Thank you. And I can agree with almost every comment that everybody's already made here tonight. And like Ms. Gopel said, mixed-use, crossroad, commercial, duplex, zero-lot line, and multifamily is just a very small portion of this parish that is a zone for those uses. So, what are we talking about? I mean, to reduce, I mean, if, if you look at, uh, I can put twenty units on, if you got an acre, a hundred-foot deep, four-hundred-foot wide, you can put twenty twenty-foot lots on it. I mean, reduce that to only eight, but it makes where developers, it, it makes it uneconomical for a developer to, to do one eight-plex on one acre of ground. It's just, what you're doing is basically putting a monitor on, on any kind of apartment or duplex development when you do this, because it's not economical to do it. What you, and, and again, the, the zoning that allows this is so little of an areas, and most of it are on major, most of the zoning is on major roads. Well, you have good traffic flow, you have good traffic pattern. And hopefully, they're gonna, uh, forty-two will get widened from airline all the way to forty-four, and forty-four from, from forty-two all the way back into Gonzalez, where it's, it's a four-lane road or a two-lane road with a turn lane in the center. Hopefully, the state's gonna appropriate the money and do it. I know it's in the planning now. Hopefully, they'll finish it. But that's gonna make the traffic, uh, not an issue. As far as the, the sewer goes, DEQ and DHH is gonna take care of that. If you don't do the sewer fluid discharge to their requirements, you're just not gonna be able to build. So, they're gonna handle that problem for you. So, I, I'm against, uh, reducing any of the densities and any of these things because there's just so few areas in this parish that allow these type of, of structures to be built in that particular zone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment from the commission? Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would, if Lindsay would allow, I would like to combine all three of them and vote for denial.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I'm sorry.
I think it was Mr. Schief. No, it was Mr. Calender. All right. Number nine. Public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish development. Excuse me?
I just have a question.
Yes.
And it's more for legal than you guys, but I wanna resolve this before this meeting ends. A, a recommendation to deny is not exactly what we need. If we're gonna send a recommendation to the council, I think the recommendation needs to be to make no changes to the table, um...
I think that's what we need. That we don't wanna change anything.
I just wanted to clarify.
I, I, I think what we voted for was no change.
Okay. And I also think you need to open and close the public hearing for each item because they were advertised.
Okay.
Okay.
I change my motion. Not changing the table for A.
Okay, have a, I need a second for that motion.
A second.
Okay, have a motion and a second, all in favor. Okay, I need a motion for item...
Well, you need to open the public hearing for B and Ms. Gopel, or anybody else is free to speak again.
Ms. Gopel, would you like to speak again? All right. Is there any other discussion on item B?
I would offer a motion that we send this to the council with the recommendation that we make no changes in the, uh, block line density.
Do you have a second to that motion?
Second, I motion.
All in favor? Item C. Do I have any comment on that motion? Do I have a motion? I need a motion on item C.
Public hearing.
Is there any public comment? Okay, Ms. Gopel, I'm sorry. I just assumed that you didn't want it, since you didn't on B. All right.
A couple of comments were made, and I'd like to, uh, talk about that. And you made some good comments that you needed more information. And one thing that I think it would be helpful is if someone could do an inventory of apartments that are existing in this parish right now, and how much vacancy is available. Also, uh, I think it would be good to have a projection, uh, of the sewer system because I have looked at the, uh, plans. They call it the crawl, walk, run. And they are getting ready to, uh, propose that and try to pass it. The big question is in their minds, how are they gonna pay for it? And, um, they're working on that real hard. If you know where the sewer is gonna be put in first in the crawl stage, it's probably highway forty-two, highway seventy-three. And you look at these areas, seventy-three doesn't have much crossroads, commercial, or mixed-use, so that's not even gonna be affected. Forty-two does have a few places, all along their forty-two. So, that's gonna have to be affected. So, when you make your planning or decisions about what development you're gonna approve and not approve, and remember that highway forty-two is ten years from completion, even though they're just getting the right away. and remember that Highway forty-two is ten years from completion, even though they're just getting the right away, it's a ten-year design. It's not going to take two years to get it done. So when you're making your recommendations and approving or denying things, you have in your mind that the, that there is going to be sewer there, the road is going to be widened, and the capacity is going to be there. If you don't know that there's work being done, then I think you need to back off on putting high-density development in that area. It may be for a later time. It's not saying you're going to reject it forever, but for now, we, we're, we're not, we can't do this. So I think you can, you can lower these numbers now and then can be raised later. But for what's happening in our parish right now and the situation we are with the infrastructure, your second guiding principle says you do not put development where the infrastructure can't support it. Go back and read your master plan. That's what it says. That's how you're supposed to be making decisions. It's really important to look at that. If you can't do that, then you're not planning. Because in ten, twenty years down the road, when the infrastructure is there, then you come back and say to the developer, okay, look, we've got space here now, you can do this multifamily dwelling. And just because it says twenty units per acre doesn't mean the developer has to do twenty units per acre. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a comment.
Okay.
Um, a couple of things Ms. Gopel referred to, and I appreciate her comments, I do. But we're not trying to let the developer make as much money as a developer can make. The fact is that, uh, the developer can't develop at all if we reduce the density to such an extent that it doesn't make it possible, financially possible to build at all. We are more, I am personally more concerned about having, uh, an affordable place for the workers, uh, who, who make, uh, lesser wages in Ascension Parish to live, and we don't really have that now. Uh, it's not, nothing to do with the developer. And the fact is, if there is a lack of occupancy of existing apartments in the parish, then the developer will know that as much as anyone. Will or will not build a development if, if he knows that he can't rent the places or sell the places out. So I don't think those are good arguments at all. I do appreciate, and as I said earlier, yes, we have infrastructure problems that we've got to address. But I think we, that's what we need to do. We need to address the infrastructure problems. Highway forty-two will be, it's a state highway, it will be improved. It will take a while, yes. Um, it is disappointing that we, uh, can't do things a lot faster. Had, had, uh, have some sales tax passed, we, we might have been able to, to make improvements more quickly. If the parish takes advantage of the, uh, state transfer program, I don't know that it will, uh, it's possible, we can do something with that. But I think we, um, yeah, we're in a, we're in a spot, we're in a bind. But I don't think this is a solution to the problem. I don't think, I think this exacerbates, exacerbates other problems we have of not having, uh, you know, affordable places for people to live. So, um, that's all. So I, I move for, uh, with regard to item C that we send it to the council with the recommendation that we make no changes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Uh, all right.
Those opposed? All right. Number nine, public hearing to amend the Ascension Parish development code, uh, section twelve thirteen, calculating residential density on a parcel of land. Mr. Compton?
So this is one that we've had for several months. We've talked a little bit about them, and I'm bringing it back for a public hearing just so we can move it forward. To remind you what we're doing here, these are revising section seventeen dash two zero seven three D three, um, to calculate the density allowed on a piece of property utilizing a net area. So the, the code would be revised to say calculate net site area by subtracting out all pipeline servitudes and rightaways, existing road rightaways, existing drainage servitudes, unmitigated wetlands, and existing water bodies from the gross side area. So then what you do is you take that acreage that you're, is available to build on, and you multiply it out by one, two, or three, if you're in residential medium, resident, uh, rural, or conservation, to determine your allowed number of units. Um, there was some conversation about transfer of development between those. I couldn't find any real-world examples where that happened, but I know Mr. Aguilar is going to speak about putting one of these items back in. I'm not opposed to it. Uh, I wanted to present it to you as was originally written so that we can have this discussion and make a recommendation to the council.
I'll just make a comment. I don't see why we should eliminate waterways or unmitigated wetlands because residents actually use that as green space or as places to play in. And so I think it should be counted as part of the amount of land that you would calculate, you know, when you calculate the amount of units that should fit on that piece of land.
But you just said it, the amount of units that should be able to fit on that land.
Not fit, to be able to be allowed on that land.
So that's the discrepancy, is, is it what should be allowed or what should fit?
What, what we're doing is allowing. You could put a million. You could. It's just that we don't allow.
Right.
So the public hearing's open?
No, I mean, yeah. Open, I mean, open, open, open. Ms. Agalore.
Billy Aguilar, yeah, and, uh, this is the same conversation we had, I think, maybe a couple of months ago, where we discussed the same issue. And, uh, pipelines, for instance, if we, and Ricky, I don't know what you mean by bodies of water, if it's a private pond that can be used for recreational purposes, I think it should be allowed. If it is a water body like a river or something that the state owns the water bottoms, then I think it should not be allowed. Uh, the pipelines, we own the pipeline right away. Uh, there's a servitude to allow that pipeline to be built in that right away. We can use the pipeline rightaways for recreational, for walking trails, jogging trails, uh, playgrounds for kids. I'm questioning mitigated wetlands or non-mitigated wetlands. It, it depends on, on, I guess, whether it's a, a true typical flooded wetlands. And I'm not for using, allowing that. If it's a wetland by definition of, of, uh, DEQ's wetlands, in some cases, it might be our backyards. I mean, you know, I'm for using that as part of the, you know, the acreage. But if it's something like a swamp at the back of, uh, you know, what we have on the southern corner of the parish where it is, you know, it's underwater ninety percent of the time, it shouldn't be allowed unless you want to mitigate it and take it out of wetlands to use it. But the biggest, my biggest issue with Ricky, I think, was the, the pipeline issue. I think that's a piece of property that we own, and if it's a private lake on the property, it's a piece of property that we own, which could be used for recreational purposes. And, um, open a question from Ricky or anybody else.
Does anybody on the commission have any questions for Ms. Agalore or comments?
Just a, one comment. This thing has bothered me since we first brought it up, as you know. Um, I'm, I'm not opposed to the idea. I have no idea what kind of impact this is going to have. I just don't have a feel for that at all. Maybe Mr. Aguilar does. I can't, you know, we don't have any real clear examples.
An example, let's, let's, let's look at, um, Manchak Plantation, which was a subdivision I developed years ago. There's a pipeline that runs through the center of it. And we were allowed to use that pipeline, of course, I don't, I don't think they even had a requirement back then. It's probably been fifteen years now. Maybe that requirement wasn't there. But there's a pipeline that runs down through it and it is next to the lake that we built there. But that whole pipeline could be used as, for recreational purposes. And, and what they're saying now is they want to take that out of the acreage allowed to compute densities, and I'm saying no. Now, we should be able to use that because it, actually, it's in everybody's, it's in half of people's front yard, and it's about ten, ten to fifteen lots just in their front yard and another twenty lots just in their backyard, which is actually, the servitude is actually part of their yard, and some of it is next to the servitude that the lake's in. So it, it, it's usable property. It's not something that's not usable. Of course, that, that subdivision has larger lots in it, so it's really not a problem. But, you know, you buy a piece of property now that has lakes on them that were dug years ago. And if they're saying we can't use that lake, which is perfectly good recreational property to use, I think it should be allowed an acreage for, uh, compute density.
So I'm going to start at the end, and we've had this discussion. I'm just refreshing my memory. The end result of what we were starting to do was accomplish something that we heard through the master plan process, was that when people go to do a PUD, a SPUD, or a TND, what they're doing is circumventing the zoning code, the zoning map that we've all agreed that we like and we love, and we think that's the way the parish should build out. So when I go do my PUD, I'm able to build smaller lots and increase my density beyond what base zoning allows, be it the one, two, three units per acre. So the problem that I was trying to solve with this code revision was to say that a PUD, a SPUD, I, I think I left TNDs out because they really are a unique animal, but a PUD or a SPUD cannot exceed the base allowed density of a tract of land. But I thought that we should get there by getting the net. Because on a PUD or a SPUD, they're going to be required to provide the open space or the parks as part of their approval. If we leave in pipeline servitudes, that allows them to increase the development potential by increasing their lot count, but we're not really getting usable open space. Now, when I say usable, you can allow your kid to play in the pipeline servitude. I'm not allowing my kid to play in the pipeline servitude. It, it's different strokes for different folks. I'm just getting from a planning perspective, to call a pipeline servitude a recreational open space is a bit of a stretch. So when I was looking at all those other things that would affect a PUD or a SPUD, when I'm developing, you know, my actual lot yield, I cannot put a lot on an unmitigated wetland. I cannot put a lot on an existing water body. I cannot put a lot in a servitude or an existing road. So that is all going to tick down those densities. What I'm going to give you back in exchange is a smaller lot size than you're allowed to build in base zoning, but I'm going to control your density by the net allowable area and, and the net acreage. So I, I was trying to play a shell game with how do we get a PUD that more or less passes the muster of the surrounding community? If I'm in conservation and I've got a thousand acres, I don't want to see more than a thousand lots if a PUD comes. But as a, a planner, should we care if those are fifty-foot lots or one-acre lots? You probably shouldn't because the traffic's going to be the same, the student population's going to be the same, the burden on the sewer or whatever, that's all the same. But what I do care is if, because I can build fifty-foot lots, my conservation PUD goes from potentially a thousand to four thousand units or whatever we are allowing with none of these restrictions in place on net density in a PUD. So ultimately, I was trying to solve that problem. This was the way I saw about doing it, by saying, well, all subdivisions could be held to the same restrictions. The PUD or SPUD mechanism allows you to get those lots smaller. Do I believe that the net density calculation is going to have a significant impact on your standard major subdivision? No. To the tune of less than a percent of the total allowed. Because of the, the wide and deep lots that are required by code, you're going to struggle to get to your, your, the max density anyway. So I don't think that normal subdivisions are going to be affected, but I was trying to target the PUDs and SPUDs.
It's just that, if you do allow a little higher density in the PUDs and SPUDs, then you might encourage closer commercial areas thereby cutting down traffic if people can walk to their drugstore, walk to their grocery store, make a very small car trip to it and not have to drive from Santa Monica to Gonzalez, then you take all the cars off the road. The higher the density in those areas, the more you encourage commercial areas to locate either in them or very near them, thereby actually cutting down traffic.
The PUD concept will still allow the mix of uses.
I understand that, but what you're doing is reducing density inside of them.
I, I'm not reducing the density beyond what they're currently allowed today. If you're allowed, uh, one unit per acre and you have a thousand acres, you're still allowed a thousand units, and you can put those units a lot closer together. You can make a dense community. What I don't want to see on that thousand acres is three thousand units where it was zoned one unit per acre. That community decided they wanted one unit per acre. That's what they decided. The zoning map, that's, they established that in their area. Should the developer be allowed to come in, pay the, the lowest price per acre he can, and then increase that density fourfold? Sure, you could say that he's going to have a council hearing, he's going to have all that stuff to, to balance it, but I can point to you on the map where these things have happened, where the residents had said, we want one unit per acre, and here's a project in our backyard that way exceeds that.
But that, that's where you have your safeguards. If you're doing a PUD or a SPUD, it's got to come to a public hearing before you guys. First of all, it's a negotiation between the developer and the parish as to what he can put in a PUD or a SPUD. You don't have, you can say he can't do that. That's the only negotiations, okay? Then next, it comes to y'all for y'all approval, and then next, it goes to the council. So you've got two public hearings involved in the PUD or SPUD, and even traditional neighborhoods, as far as that goes, and all of them in the same thing. Um, I, I don't think anybody's going to put a thousand units in, in, in a hundred acres, you know, I just don't think that's going to happen. But, uh, uh, I just really think that this is, to change, really what we change. If you want to take out, you know, existing servitudes on canals and stuff like that, I mean, I have no problem with that. And I have no problem with taking out things that are flooded wetlands or non-mitigated wetlands if it's underwater ninety percent of the time. But if it can be used for recreational areas, I say why can't you use it? And especially pipelines, I mean, your kids may not want to play on the, on, I can tell you, everybody in Manchak Plantation, their kids run back and forth across it all day long. You know, and it's a forty-eight-inch high pressure gas line, by the way. So, uh, it's not something that, that doesn't happen.
Right now, Ricky, with, um, with a PUD, we don't have any, there are no maximum residential limitations. Yes, there are there. So it's only what it can support. We don't, I, I mean, if I, if, I, I knew some, of some PUDs in, um, Southern California when I lived there. One was really nicely done. It had commercial in the middle. It had a school. It had a boys' girls' club. It had a lot of residents around there and people. It was convenient. It was in a great spot. If I were to take that and, and overlay it onto the areas we're talking about in here, I, I don't have a feel for whether the density in that PUD would exceed the density of the underlying area or not. I don't, I don't have a feel for that at all. I mean, do we have any way to, to understand that?
The purpose of a PUD is to do something that base zoning does not allow you to do.
But then you're, you're putting the requirement of the base zoning on the PUD now.
I'm putting the requirement of density. Right now, our minimum lot size in conservation is one acre. If I want to do a PUD in conservation, you can get down to a townhouse lot or a twenty-foot or a fifty-foot lot. But I want to control the density to what that zoning map said, we want this area to be one unit per acre. What ends up happening is you'd have a conservation community, a community surrounded by open space, if they wanted to choose to use less of their land for physical development to get in exchange for the PUD. So I agree, in other parts of the country, where I came from, the evil state of Florida, you know, PUDs, uh, uh, TNDs, the reason you do is because base zoning won't allow you to do what you want to do. The problem with our zoning map is, most people can do what they want to do in base zoning. They can get the unit count. They can get the product that the market wants. You've lost control over that development approval process. In other parts of the country, you have to do a PUD. You have to go through that negotiation process where you're going to pay all these extra fees and improve these intersections. You're going to provide parks and school sites in exchange for the ability to develop your property. We don't have that here because most subdivisions can just do a major subdivision, meet code, and move on. Uh, but in the areas of this parish that we probably want to think about how to protect them with billions of dollars of industrial development coming, we're going to have some dollars being spent developing residential communities here very quickly. How do we want those communities to look? That's going to come before you guys very rapidly.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I look at the reason for this, that it's to get a more accurate representation of the actual carrying capacity of the land. And as, as I heard everybody, I kept going back to that reason, that regardless of whether it's unmitigated water or a pipeline, those things are not carrying capacity of the land. And we're talking about what can physically be used to build a residential home or apartment or whatever. So I, I don't get why, I don't understand why we wouldn't want to go to that kind of calculation. It doesn't take away, as Mr. Aguilar said, it really didn't impact Manchak Plantation. Had we done it this way, it wouldn't have impacted Manchak Plantation a bit. But it does provide the protection of all the things we've been talking about tonight, about infrastructure and other things. We're looking, uh, subdivisions that will come before us, we'll be looking at the carrying capacity of the usable land, not all the other stuff. we'll be looking at the carrying capacity of the usable land, not all the other stuff. Is that correct? Is that, I'm trying to get my head around the concept.
Carrying capacity is a term we use all the time when we were doing due diligence in Florida because you wanted to understand the available upland acres that you could put physical units on. And so we would less out everything else and create a net developable acreage, and that we always called is the carrying capacity of the land. What, what unit size would be how we get to our density? Because we knew we were doing a PUD, but the market would determine whether that would be townhomes, duplexes, fifty foot, seventy foot, ninety foot, acre lot. Now, that was all based on the economics. But the carrying capacity of the land was always based on the net developable area. And we would less out all of this stuff because you can't put a house on it. In Florida, you have open space and rec standards that we don't have. And so by taking out the things that are just assets to the community, that doesn't change the carrying capacity, that's just an asset for your community. That's just open space that you're providing because you have to, you can't build on it.
I understand the carrying capacity and I agree with what both of y'all are saying. But if you're gonna require me to have recreational areas and green space, ought to be able to use those pipeline areas for green space and/or wetland areas for green space if you're gonna require that of me. Not that I can build on it, I don't necessarily wanna build on it, but it ought to be, that acreage ought to be usable to, since I own it, it ought to be usable to use for those areas as part of that requirement.
We don't require it in a standard subdivision. If he's gonna present us a PUD and we're calculating his density based on the net area and a portion of his required open space and recreational space is in pipelines and lakes, that is a negotiation point that we could say, we'll allow you to use sixty percent of that area towards that goal. But the other forty percent needs to be upland, it needs to be parked, and that's the negotiation that would happen when you're approving a PUD. We don't have that requirement in major subdivisions. If we wanna go in at it, we can do that, but right now, major subdivisions have no requirements for recreation space. None.
And this will kinda back into it?
No. Um, i- if you want to go in and require a major subdivision to require, to provide open space, you'll have to amend the code.
Well, I'm concerned about, by focusing them on net, the other stuff becomes available for something other than building a house.
It is today.
I feel like lot sizes are a fail safe for that though, still. Is that on a regular neighborhood, on a regular subdivision, taking PUD out of that way?
They are, but you have to still look at the end game. The end game was how do you address this in the PUD? And the PUD says, you've gotta use the net developable area for your property before you rezone to a PUD to get your carrying capacity of this land, okay? Now, I don't think that it's a major problem for a standard subdivision because I just don't think they'll ever get to their full carrying capacity because of the fail safe of lot size. It's the PUDs that we're concerned about. I don't think you wanna write it that exempts major subdivisions because you could have some that come in that, gosh, it totally is unbalanced the other way. I'm not gonna go out and find those lots, that's not my job. But the fact of the matter is, we're trying to resolve the issue with these two types of development and it's gonna impact the other type, but I think it's very minor.
What's the fail safe that's in place now for the PUD?
There is none.
Negotiation?
Uh, negotiation and council approval.
And that negotiation, I don't know, I guess that can be argued deeply.
Sure, and, and one of the arguments we heard is that staff does the negotiation and then it just comes to the commission and the council for approval. I mean, I can't deny that, we, we're on the ground, we're, we're there forty hours a week. We're the ones who meet face to face multiple times trying to make these things better. Um, but ultimately, it does come down to the commission and the council to make those approvals.
Ricky, there's no requirement now for green spaces in traditional subdivisions at all now?
Ever.
Okay, I guess then the next biggest component is, is drainage and most of that is retention, which requires, which requires pond, so we're losing some property to that already. A, a large portion of property to that.
Is it considered recreation?
It is for me.
It is for me.
What you call it and the purpose it serves are two different things.
Ricky, if you remember when we first started talking about this, I suggested something which, and you weren't able to find a precedent and that was to assign some value to that land that wasn't a one, it was something less than one, uh, to calculate, and that would be a compromise, you know? Um, were you not able, I know you weren't able to find, uh, an example of that, you told me you weren't, but, um, were you not able to think about developing something like that?
You know, I did, and then as I sort of looked at it, I, I, it just, it gets so complicated. You either count it or you don't. I mean-
No, I don't think you either count or you don't.
Pipeline servitudes, we're gonna give a half a unit per acre in mixed use, we're gonna, or in residential medium, we're gonna give a third of a unit and, I mean, it's sort of-
That sounds good, let's write that down.
You know, I, yeah, sure, we could add something.
The point is, there are good arguments on both sides. I appreciate your argument and I appreciate Mr. Agalor's too. And I, I think a compromise makes sense to me. And I don't wanna burden you guys with having to figure that out. I'm disappointed that we couldn't find some example of, of that being done somewhere. I know, I, you know, I'm not smart enough to have thought of that for the first time ever, so someone must have figured it out.
The term we used was transfer of development rights. And typically, what that involves is, you know, Patrice has a tract of land that she doesn't wanna develop and she's gonna transfer those development rights to me to allow me to increase my lot count or my yield or my density, however we're gonna do the math. I couldn't find an example of a community that says, you can transfer the development rights out of a pipeline servitude onto your upland. They just say, if it's a pipeline servitude, you can't use it, if it's a drainage servitude, you can't use it. I mean, it was cut and dry, it was, how do you calculate the net area? You less out all this stuff that you can't put a house on.
Yeah, you can't put a house on it, but it is sometimes usable.
Right.
My, the lake behind my house, I fish in it, everybody uses it. We can't boat in it, but we can use, we use the lake. So maybe it would be, you know, maybe it's not half, maybe it's like twenty-five percent, maybe there's some number in there that would make sense, that's all.
Mr. Nezahal?
Yes.
But you have any- Mr. Agalor?
Yes, sir.
Did you wanna say something more, Mr. Agalor?
You had something to talk-
I ask Ricky, is there a minimum square footage for lot sizes in traditional subdivisions? And there is. So the square footage of a lot's gonna dictate how many lots you can have on a property anyway?
In the traditional subdivision, yes.
In the traditional subdivision, now that affects PUDs or T and D's or-
One train of thought here is, is something that you just mentioned, Mr. Billy. Uh, I'm looking at this, this list of things, it's on our proposal, about pipeline servitudes, uh, right of ways on the roads and, uh, existing drainage servitudes, wetlands. Those things you're not gonna use for building ever.
Well, you can't use roads, don't you?
You can't use, I mean, it's impossible.
Or usually public transport anyways.
That I could, I could see being removed. Uh, if you require to place a pond in a development for drainage, that's taking away, I can see giving full credit for something like that because it's, it's part of the property that you bought and owned and it's being, you're being told you have to take that property away. And like Mr. Chafesi said, there may or may not be a use for it. And so I can see that being removed as one of the calculation factors. But this other stuff, I got to believe, it's not gonna be a developable property anyway for you, so it's not gonna affect your development.
Right, yeah, my argument is, I mean, you, you know, you, you can't use the pipeline anyway, but you can use it for green spaces and if they require green areas and/or recreational areas in subdivision, which, you know, we said they don't, but you have, still have a minimum lot square footage that dictates how many lots you can have. And then when you, if you take out all this stuff, and say I got fifty acres, you take out all this stuff and I gotta put in a twenty acre detention pond for, for stormwater retention, now I'm losing that twenty acres plus ten acres for a pipeline?
That's why I, I can agree with you that if part of the development is a requirement for a retention pond, which is actually removing buildable property from the plant, then I can see that. But stuff that never has an opportunity, no matter how you develop your development, those things should be subtracted from the calculated-
Proposed lakes are not subtracted. Existing water bodies, because existing water bodies affect your carrying capacity. A proposed lake brings your carrying capacity up because you're providing retention to drain the property. Proposed lakes are not subtracted, existing lakes work.
Right, and I'm saying that. But again, your square footage of your lot dictates how many lots you can have, so first fail safe.
Well, that's the, the whole point about this is that you remove these areas from the calculation, you reduce the density of the allowable, on the, on the buildable portion of the property. Mr. Agalor's point is that it's already limited by the lot size anyway, so how much impact are we having by doing this? And it, and it is more work for somebody, it's probably more work for us now.
The impact in major subdivisions is minimal.
Yeah, I got that point, right.
Our end game is to affect the PUDs and SPUDs.
But you were saying that you didn't wanna make this adjustment with the exception of T and D?
T and D's are a unique animal. And I don't know that we'll ever see another one in this parish, but the idea of allowing a T and D to exceed base zoning still interests me because I think if it's done in the right way, in the right location, that it could work. Put a T and D in Dutch Town or in Prairieville with the existing zoning's three, but you bring the base zoning up to, or you bring the density up to five units an acre, I think it could work up there. You know, you could have a mix of townhomes and single family attached with a commercial center and a school site, a library, you know, whatever. I, I don't wanna exempt, uh, include T and D's yet because I think that those, I, we can heavily negotiate T and D's. They need to be in the right place, but you can negotiate.
Okay. Any, anybody further, further discussion? Do you have a motion on item A? Does anybody have a motion?
I recommend approval with the addition of retention water bodies, both existing and proposed.
I think that already exists, doesn't it?
Wait, say, say that again, you wanna do what?
Move for approval but include both, uh, existing and proposed water bodies in the calculation.
That are used for retention ponds?
Sorry, used for retention.
Okay, so if I have a hundred acres and I've gotta build twenty acres of retention for that hundred acres, I can't count that twenty acres towards my density or I can?
You can, you can.
So for existing and proposed, eliminate, okay.
But isn't that already what we do or not?
No.
It's not what we do, man?
Today, it's gross. It's the whole, the whole piece is gross.
Okay, I'm just adding the water bodies based on that recreational.
Just adding the water bodies back.
Can I second that motion?
Can we have, oh, wait, so, so let me get this clear now before we-
I can't make it clear.
What you're saying is you're in favor of removing these sites for total calculation to get a net with the exception of the water bodies?
Correct.
Okay, okay, I'm clear on that.
Better than me.
Um, I think we might add back the pipeline green space also.
Gotta vote my motion first.
I know. Okay, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passed, so, okay. Item B.
Alright, so item B takes the item that we just passed and applies that language to the PUD and SPUD order. Basically saying, to calculate your density in a PUD or SPUD, you must use net residential area, net area.
Discussion.
I'm not discussing, I was gonna move to prove it based on the previous language.
Yeah, wait a minute, this is still, uh, did we get a second on that?
Yeah, we passed the first motion.
I know, the first one, call it a second one.
It's open for discussion.
Okay, yeah, it's open.
No, I, it's not that, I, I just don't understand, I just still don't get what the impact will be on a, on a PUD or SPUD. Of make, of making this change. I, I'm not sure we understand enough, I'm not sure I understand enough about this to, to support it.
I think in the long run, when it does-
And I'm not sure you can talk all night and explain it to me.
I, I can, and, and I'll tell you that the impact is significant. Okay, so let's just, on a piece of paper, we're gonna draw a square, okay? And that square represents my property that I wanna rezone to a PUD.
Draw it up there. So it's gone all that trouble.
So here's my, my property that I own.
I would like to say that's the first thing I've understood tonight.
This is a square. Alright, and we're gonna call my property a hundred acres, because it's nice and easy for math. And for the sake of argument, we're gonna say that I'm developing this property three years ago, okay? So I'm gonna do my PUD and I'm zoned conservation. So I'm allowed one unit per acre. So which means, by base zoning, I'm allowed one hundred one acre lots. And because of the way a property gets divided and developed, you're gonna have a road, you're gonna have some stormwater, and by the time you get in there and draw all these one acre lots, you're probably gonna end up with around eighty, maybe less, but, you know, there's gonna be some number less than one hundred. So, three years ago, I'm gonna come to you and I'm gonna develop this as a PUD in conservation zoning. So, the, the market is demanding, um, sixty foot lots. I'm in conservation zoning, so I need to do a PUD to do sixty foot lots. So I'm gonna go in there, I'm gonna build my road, I'm gonna build my stormwater, and at the end of the day, on a sixty foot lot subdivision, um, at about two point five units per acre, I'm gonna get about two hundred and fifty lots on this property. And that amounts to, uh, two and a half times what base zoning would allow, okay? So conservation zoning, one unit per acre, I get my PUD approved for sixty foot lots and I, I develop my two hundred and fifty lot subdivision. Fast forward to today, or six months in the future, if these ordinances pass, with my hundred acres, if there's a pipeline servitude running through the middle, if there's a lake, if there's, uh, maybe an existing right of way, let's say, I, I'm lessing out ten acres, so now I only have ninety developable acres, okay? And I'm gonna limit my base zoning to the net carrying capacity of that land, so that's ninety developable acres times one, that's ninety lots. Now, as the developer, if the market's sixties, if the market's townhouses, if the market's fifty foot lots, I can only build ninety lots. I'm gonna do the PUD to get them the size I want, because in conservation zoning, they have to be one acre, but I wanna build fifty foot lots, the property's cheap and I can get out there and I can build it and build my package plant and, and serve it, you know, on whatever highway I'm on. This is a significant change, but trust me when I tell you, I went through a lot of public hearings. And this is one thing I heard a lot, was that we like our zoning map and when you approve these PUDs and allow people to exceed base zoning, we don't like that. And so, yeah, the fail safe is, uh, you gotta go to a commission hearing, you gotta go to a council meeting hearing. But what if the commissioners and the councilmen, they don't listen to my residents? They don't listen to my neighbors and they don't, they don't, they don't hear the complaints and the cries of, uh, uh, we don't want this development and approve it anyway? Well, then the fail safes have gone. I was trying to create revisions to the ordinance that gives some, some comfortableness to those people that says, we hear your cries that you wanna maintain base zoning. As a planner, I can tell you, it doesn't matter if it's a hundred one acre lots or a hundred twenty foot lots, it's the same population, the same traffic, the same sewage, the same, you know, all the, the counts are the same. It doesn't, unit size does not matter, count matters. So if we can control the count, we can keep the, the thing like we want. The PUD gives us that negotiating ability to talk about the parks, the recreation, the open space, uh, the, the traffic impacts, that there're gonna be fees or, you know, school impacts, all that kinda stuff. There's negotiating power in there. But the density, we've never had, you know, stroke to tell them, well, here's your max density, which I think is what developers are looking for when they come to a central parish to develop, is, uh, surety. They, they wanna know what, what the possibilities are with a PUD. It's really, you know, the sky's the limit. We basically write a blank check to developers, they show us what you got and we negotiate back to ten thousand dollars for a park that's supposed to serve nine hundred and fifty people. The economics don't make sense and it's because the parish isn't used to negotiating with developers. You know, we don't have some of the deep pocket national developers here that you have in other parts of the country. But we do have the ability to legislate, change the code a little bit, and maybe tweak it so that we do get some better development overall. You know, Billy's gonna hate the idea, but I think we should require recreation space in standard subdivisions, right? I mean, I think that the code could be revised to reduce the lot size in standard subdivisions because once again, if you're not exceeding the carrying capacity density of the land, three units, two units, or one unit per acre, who cares? who cares what the lot size is? You could, you could require buffers, like, to adjacent properties if they're going to come out and say, we don't want small lots next to us. There are mechanisms we can do to sort of counter these things, but getting to a net developable area is just the first step.
Ricky, when you, if you do this, you, you eliminate the advantage, if there is any, of the developer going with a PUD in the first place. There, there's no, there's no reason to do it. In fact, there's a disadvantage to go, if his density is limited to the underlying area because he's got to negotiate with you on a bunch of other things, so why not just put a regular subdivision on?
Because in a regular subdivision, in conservation zoning, he has to build one-acre lots, and he can't find a hundred people to spend forty thousand or, how much, how much is an acre in this parish? Fifty thousand plus the cost of the roads?
But you're, you're still only giving, you're still giving him the same number of homes, whatever the lot size.
But he has homes that the market wants.
Well, I don't know.
I'd, I'd like to hear from Mr. Agalor, actually.
If we just have a PUD and a SPUD, just to, to change the density of lots, then I'd say it shouldn't be allowed to begin with. The intent of a PUD and a SPUD is to do things like maybe put a doctor's office on the front of the property. Do a convenience store over there.
What Maury said earlier.
Do a, a hamburger, or a cafe, and do townhouses in the middle, and do residential lots around the exterior. That's what the intent of a PUD and a SPUD is for, is to do things like that. And, and if people are going to, to y'all to do a PUD and a SPUD just to reduce the density of lots, then I'll say that's totally absolutely wrong, it shouldn't be allowed.
Orange Grove was a purely residential PUD that provided a school site that didn't require a PUD, and it provided a fire station that didn't require a PUD. Why did they do it? To reduce their lot size. Dutchtown Villas, Dutchtown Gardens, did commercial out on Highway seventy-three, which ultimately gave them, I guess, three additional commercial lots, but ultimately, the reason they did it was to get smaller lots. Keystone is, uh, nine-hundred-something lots with maybe a five-acre commercial site and a really small part, PUD. Uh, Bullion Crossing, got a, a commercial tract up front to do a Walgreens and a strip center and zero lot-line houses. Um, we've got Riverton, which is a TND, which may or may not ever be developed, but it has a school site, commercial site, commercial out on the highway. I, I'm just giving you the examples that we've seen in this parish. We're not seeing out-of-the-box thinking with regards to PUDs. We've seen two denied in the last two years because the council didn't want to change the allowable land use within, the property was zoned commercial, they needed to do a PUD to allow a different commercial use, and it was denied. So, the out-of-the-box thinking is a long way from Ascension Parish. I'm telling you, the reason people do PUDs here is to do a smaller lot size. And if you can change your code just to allow a smaller lot size but hold base zoning, we'll never see another PUD, ever. Because if you can get the lot size to what the market actually wants, that's what the developers are going to build.
Then you shouldn't allow any of them. You should have said, you've got to do lots this size, and y'all, you allowed it, and all y'all voted on it, on making it yours.
And opposite, and it's that the commercial viability of, 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 of those businesses in front of the PUDs and SPUDs need a higher density within the PUD or SPUD to make it. They need more people.
It's not my job, and it's not your job, to determine the economic viability of a piece of property. If, if a property is not economically viable, it won't be developed. Now, if a property-
Why do a PUD or SPUD then?
I'm wondering if we're just taking it off the table, period.
Other than, than reduce the density, the size of a lot? I mean, we might as well not have it.
Sounds like this is taken off the table.
Well, PUD, you know, PUDs work very well in some areas, and, um, maybe not here. That's unfortunately, uh, I, I like the idea of PUDs, I, I've lived in one, and I, and I was familiar with one because I was, I was on the Boys and Girls Club Board, and we had a facility there. And it worked great, it was in Southern California. We may not be ready for that here.
Well, how, how could we give you, or the parish, more negotiating strength? Because it looks like, from the examples you've given, we have this desire to have a first-class PUD, and because we have no negotiating strength, we don't get one.
I wouldn't say we don't have negotiating strength, I think it's been, um, we haven't seen a new PUD since I've been in the office. You know, Keystone classified, is classified as a new one, but it was an existing subdivision that I saw a benefit to converting it to a PUD, to, for the ability to get some parks and some sidewalks and a little commercial property, you know, site. Um, I, I saw it being better at the end than it was going to be if it had just continued on to the major subdivision. The, the idea of negotiating a PUD is something that developers aren't used to, and the reason they aren't used to it is because they're used to just coming in and saying, this is what I'm going to do, and it got approved. So, I don't know that we need more strength, I think you need somebody there to pull the, the, the float, so to speak. I saw a parade this weekend where a man pulled a float, so.
So, who would be pulling the float, us?
Your planning staff would pull the float. The, the, the guys who are on the ground, seven, five days a week, forty hours, you know, meeting, and, and bringing those things to you guys, and when you ask us what our opinion is of what's presented, we tell you whether or not we agree with what they've done, whether they've backpedaled on things that we've talked about in the meeting. That's our job, that's our, our role and responsibility for getting better development. The code, if we don't want to restrict net density, then I would just as soon recommend going back and undoing what we just did because it's, it has such a minimal effect on major subdivisions. This is going to affect PUDs and SPUDs. If we don't feel like doing that, then let's undo the other thing because it doesn't make sense. Which I'm okay with.
Anybody?
Is, is this, is this, is this taking PUDs off the table? I mean, is this just making this impossible to have a PUD pop up at all in the parish?
No, what it does is that when developer X comes to me and says, I want to do this project in this location, I say, okay, here's what your density can be. It's limited by the carrying capacity of the land. If we don't do this, and he comes to me and says, here's what I'm going to do, I say, well, here's how you have to do it, you have to do a PUD, and you have to get the commission and the council to buy off on it, and as long as he's got enough friends in both bodies, that's what will happen.
Is, is the code for PUD limited by square footage of residential lots sizes? Is there any restriction for that?
No.
So, for a PUD, you basically do anything you want to with yourself?
Yes.
So there's no fail-safe like lot size, like in a regular medium, and that's a, that's a problem?
But you may want to do townhouses in one location, you may build board homes in one location, you may do big lots in another location.
If this, he wants you on the microphone, he's yelling at you. If this commission is interested in tabling both of these items, I'll bring something to you in the next three to four months that addresses doing smaller lot sizes in all zoning categories. It will require recreation space in a major subdivision. It'll require sidewalks and street trees. It'll require the things that we want from a PUD in all subdivisions. And what we'll be doing in essence is saying, if you want to do a PUD, the only reason to do it is to mix uses, to add commercial into your mix, where it's not currently allowed.
So you're not talking about changing the underlying density, just changing the-
The lot size.
-allow the lot sizes to allow for some other flexibility.
So if you own a thousand acres in, from, uh, some area that's zoned conservation, you're still only allowed a thousand units, but you may be, uh, allowed to do fifty-foot lots if you provide sidewalks and street trees and a park. You know, we would have requirements for what it would take to get to a smaller lot size. And it's, it's all in the code, you would have to make it so that somebody can just look at the code and understand what the requirements are. They don't have to rezone their property to a PUD to get to a sixty-foot lot in conservation zoning, or rural. Let's talk about rural, I mean, rural is half-acre lots, which are essentially two-twenty by, or one-ten by two-twenty. You know, the, the market, the segment of the population that can afford that, or that even want a half-acre lot, you know, is small. And especially as the boomers get older and want less land to, to, to maintain. You know, we're talking about limiting the availability of land to develop that stuff if we keep these minimum lot sizes in the code.
So making several of us up here about-
I know, I am.
So basically, if we would approve this and send this on as a recommendation, we're accomplishing the same thing?
Not necessarily, because in a major subdivision, you're still going to be held to the same lot sizes.
Well, you, you're still talking about holding it to the underlying-
In a PUD.
In a PUD.
Yeah, but changing the lot size is a big deal.
It's a huge deal.
For what? I'd like to table this and think about this more, and, uh-
I, I drafted something about two-and-a-half years ago and got wrapped up in other issues and, and never really pursued it further. But I'd be happy to bring it to you as a staff report item that we can talk about if you're interested in exploring that option. Because what it does is it really takes PUDs out of the picture unless somebody really wants to add commercial or office land use into their property.
And it significantly increases the value of the underlying subdivision by providing these things.
Right, you're creating complete subdivisions in every major subdivision, not just the ones that have to get a PUD. And what we're saying is, you can still develop the base zoning requirements today. If you've got three units per acre and you want to build your seventy-foot lot subdivision with no sidewalks or street trees or parks, you can do that, but we're going to do a trade-off. You want to build sixty-foot lots, then we're going to require this. You want to build fifty-five foot lots, you, you're going to require, you want to get to fifty-foot lots, here's what we're going to require. And, and require those things in different zoning categories. So if you want to do that in conservation, your requirement may be a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer along your property perimeter so that no one adjacent to you is next to a, a small lot house.
Remind me, I'm sorry, remind me, what else is allowed in conservation?
One unit per acre, that's it.
Strictly residential.
Strictly residential.
So you've got to do a PUD to put any kind of commercial?
Yes, you've got to do that in any of our zoning categories, residential, medium, conservation, or rural.
Okay.
Okay.
I can ask Ricky, Ricky, so let's say we're doing a PUD, and say, let's go back to your example up here that you had on the board, which you square with twenty acres, and you took ten acres out for a parish zoning. Maybe we want to do ten acres of commercial on the front. Then we can still do with the ninety acres we have, we can still do the ninety, the ninety lots. So we take ten acres out for commercial on the front, and we're going to do two buildings, does that mean we can pick up eight more lots?
Yes, sir. The, 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 the mix of land use in a PUD is not going to affect the carrying capacity of that residential density. You could provide, uh, uh, on your ninety acres, eighty acres of commercial, I'm going to still tell you on that remaining ten acres, you can fit ninety units.
Alright, so, do we need, um, a motion?
I have to withdraw a motion, because I got made an earlier motion, I withdraw that in favor of what you said.
Okay, so Mr. Chafiezi, would you make your motion?
Is this a tabling?
Well, I, uh, assuming we've, we've withdrawn A.
Do we have to go table A, B, and C separately, or can we table?
I don't believe the public is going to complain, no.
Let, let's do the moral.
Billy, you got any complaints? Um, well, assuming we've withdrawn A, I'd like to table, um, I moved to table, um, items A, B, and C under, under, um, under, uh, Agenda Item Nine, until we, uh, well, let's see, we're going to table it indefinitely.
I want to say that.
Okay, do I, do I have a second?
Wait, 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 I got a question from Leo.
No, you got that?
We've already made a motion and approved it and voted on it on A. Can we just go and table it now, or do we have to come back and make a motion to-
No, we withdrew.
We, I don't think we voted, but he was-
Yeah, we did.
Oh, okay.
We did, I, I- We have to vote on that, I guess.
Okay.
I don't think we can do that right now without making a motion to do it.
Right. Okay.
Yes, that's the ultimate goal.
Yeah, you can't just-
You know what, I, we-
Reopen the public hearing.
Okay.
We may have to leave item A alone, it was already moved and had a public hearing. I'm not sure we can-
More information has come out, if you reopen the public hearing, close the public hearing, and make another motion, a substitute motion. Who's going to-
Uh-uh.
I'm waiting. I'm going to reopen the public hearing, discuss revoking the, the, um, item A that we approved.
Well, we've made a recommendation, so we're not revoking anything.
We're revoking a recommendation.
So moved.
I need a second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now I need a motion to table A, B, and C.
And I, I made that motion.
Okay, I need a second to Mr. Chafiezi's motion.
And second. And second.
Okay, alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, wait, staff report.
Okay, so this item came to us from strategic planning, and, um, I'm going to be blunt, there is one person that we are, uh, drafting this ordinance for. We've got one complaint about a person who is having repeated garage sales. Uh, Ms. Manda was asked to address this issue via this ordinance that you've got in your packet, and at the strategic planning meeting, they made the recommendation to send it to us for more evaluation. So, if you, if you printed out what I emailed you, um, you have an idea of what I'm going to talk about real quickly, but the problem is not what this person is selling. The problem is the frequency of the sales. The fact that he may have a garage sale every other week, every three weeks, every four weeks, whatever it is. It's too frequent for the complainant's issue. But the ordinance that was drafted talks about, uh, personal property being available to sell, and you can't buy something and resell it, uh, and I made the crack that anything I buy, unless I'm eating it, is for resale. Right, I, I'm going to try to resell something. So, what I did is I did some research, uh, and I tried to stick to Louisiana, but I found a couple others for garage sale ordinances. How do people in other communities deal with garage sale? The issue we're dealing with is frequency. How do you address frequency? Is you permit it? Because the only way we're able to monitor whether someone has had an illegal garage sale is to check whether or not he was permitted. So, you establish a permitting process, which means they come into the office and get a low-cost permit. You establish the number of garage sales someone can have a year to establish how many of the times they can come and get that permit. And then you establish the process by which you determine if somebody's had an illegal garage sale. And that involves the calling of a code enforcement officer out on a weekend to investigate. Because we cannot take the word of a citizen to court and say, well, he said that he said that they had a garage sale and blah, blah, blah. We have to use our code enforcement officers to make that determination. So, through collecting permit fees, we can afford to spend a hundred-and-twenty-five or a hundred-and-fifty dollars, whatever that four-hour call-out fee that we're going to have to pay the code enforcement officer out to investigate an illegal garage sale. Once they've had an illegal garage sale, then we're going to take them to adjudication court to determine whether or not they've had an illegal garage sale, and then fine them, some other fee. So are we going to charge people now five hundred dollars for having an illegal garage sale? That's the big elephant in the room, is what is the penalty for having an illegal garage sale? Okay, so if the, the problem is frequency, how do you address that? You address that with permitting, and I was already told, flat out, we are not going to do permitting for garage sales. So, I don't know the answer to this problem, and I'm bringing it to you guys for discussion. How do you stop somebody from having too many garage sales?
Couldn't we just ask Mr. Agalor to stop handling it?
But Maury was even before us.
Because any amendment to the development code has to come to this body.
Then also, just to throw a monkey wrench in the hole works, I think a long, like, a year ago, the state of Louisiana enacted a piece of legislation that makes sale of second-hand goods for, for cash elite-
I think they overturned that.
Okay.
The, the scrappers got together and had that overturned.
Okay, I didn't know that, but I know, I remember when they passed that piece of legislation.
Wow. So, the recommendation is to say nothing, or what, what was it?
My recommendation would be that we present to you guys an actual garage sale ordinance and send that to the council and let them defeat it or pass it if they want to do that. Because it is my belief that the only way that we can monitor an illegal garage sale is to have a permitting process, something that we know whether or not they've pulled a permit, something whether or not we know they've had more than four in a year. Because without that, it's random. Let, let's go with the non-permitted process. We just established, you can only have four garage sales a year, but whatever. So, Joe has four garage sales, and on the fifth one, he calls us. So we go out and investigate, and yes, he's having a garage sale, but to us, that's the first one. So he has three more that are still legal because we've allowed four. So now he goes out for his fifth site visit, determines there's an illegal garage sale. So we've had five site visits at a hundred-and-twenty-five bucks a pop. So now we're over five hundred dollars, which is our potential fine for having an illegal garage sale. So now are we charging somebody a thousand dollars for an illegal garage sale? What is our end game here?
And how many items do you have to sell to call it a garage sale?
And how do you determine if it's personal property?
Right.
And, and it left a time you bought it. I, I bought it Saturday, by, by Tuesday, I don't want it anymore, so next Saturday, it's for sale.
Correct.
You know, you can't police that, and then I, it would have to go to parish courts to be settled out if we do, I reckon. For one complaint.
I must confess, I still don't know what we're supposed to do.
Well, in, in our packet, it's only, it's only an ordinance defining what a garage sale is.
In your packet, it's under staff report, because I'm just bringing it to you- In your packet, it's under staff report, because I'm just bringing it to you to tell you what we're being brought.
Yeah.
I'm gonna bring you something next month for a public hearing.
Thank you so much.
If you recommend me do that, and we can make a motion of whether or not we like that or not and send that to the council. Because I don't know what else to do with it.
And you're gonna draw upon some other areas?
From Jefferson Parish.
Okay.
And use it. And one of the things I do like, I found in St. Lucie County in, um, in Florida, is the fee that they charge for the permit covers advertising, because they list it on their website and they play it on their TV station. So, you know, they're paying for an advertisement for their garage sales.
One other question thought of on this subject. Has the parish of Ascension acted, uh, ordinance that says that people cannot place garage sale signs, they're trash on a stick sign thing, didn't they?
There's, there's stick sign litter ordinance stuff, but, you know, we're so limited in our resources that we have guys that drive around with a trailer on the back and they hold the signs periodically, but there's no real enforcement of that. You know, calling your numbers, saying, "Hey, you placed a sign illegally, here's a five hundred dollar fine."
So do we have to take any action right now with-
You can recommend that I have a public hearing next month on it.
I have a-
So moved, Mr. Chan.
And second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned.